All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Good evening, welcome to the Monday, July 22 city council meeting. My name is Alderman Braithwaite and I'm standing in as Mayor Pro Tem because our current mayor is out on vacation. Clerk Reed, would please call, roll call?
Yep. Alderman Fleming, Alderman Fisk, Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Nguyen, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Ruth Simmons, Alderman Suffertin, Alderman Ravel, and Alderman Rainey.
Here.
We have a quorum. Perfect. Really, really excited. We're going to start our meeting with a quick public announcement proclamation. Let me see if I get these names right. We have here this evening the owners of Mustard's Last Stand. So with us is it Steve Starkman, go ahead and start making your way up, Karen, Nick, and then watching at home, we say hello to Jerry and Kimberly Starkman. Yes?
Yes.
Perfect, perfect. Sure.
Everybody has the chief of police.
That's awesome. So, this evening I have the pleasure on behalf of the mayor of recognizing a very longstanding business in our community, one that we all know extremely well. It's for Mustard's Last Stand and they're celebrating 50 years of business in our city. So give them a hand. So I'll quickly read this and then we'll make the presentation and ask you to share a few words. So whereas Mustard's Last Stand, a family-run business, was founded by Jerry and Rita Starkman and Ashley and Rosemary Springer 50 years ago, and whereas the family had originally owned a pizza place named Inferno, which was situated adjacent to the train station on Central Street, facing an ending lease, they decided to open a hot dog stand as a temporary restaurant while they searched for a new location for the pizza place. You could laugh about that. Whereas the hot dog stand became a very successful but remained nameless for the first couple of years due to the temporary status, it wasn't until it was issued a naming contest offering $100 prize for a customer who came up with the best name, which birthed the name Mustard's Last Stand. Whereas Mustard's Last Stand is a timeless, old-school hot dog and hamburger place that you just don't see around anymore, and whereas Mustard's Last Stand has been featured on many television and nude broadcasting, including Chicago's Best, which named Mustard's as its quintessential icon and landmark in the north suburbs for its quality food and friendly service, which I know very well. And whereas in 2006, Mustard's Last Stand was inducted into the Vienna Beef Hall of Fame, which I don't know if anyone else knew that. A lot of great tidbits. Now therefore, on behalf of our mayor, Stephen Hagerty, mayor of the city of Evanston, July 27th, we're proud to proclaim as Mustard's Last Stand Day in celebration of your 50th anniversary. Congratulations. Whose ward is that in? Seventh, Eleanor, you want to?
I think city manager Bob Quetzal to go up because I think he's one of your best customers.
No pictures for city manager.
Come on, I just...
I'll just come get a hot dog later.
All right, I'll come on down.
Oh, I just outed him to the trees.
My dad started Mustard's Last Stand and I believe he's watching tonight, so hello Dad. And I just want to thank everybody for 50 years of just being a good neighbor and having a really good relationship with this community. Obviously, we're right next to Northwestern's football stadium, so we embrace the game day status and when the different teams come to town, it's just an absolutely beautiful event, and it's very rare to have that kind of enjoyment so close to a football stadium and be exclusive to Evanston. So we're really proud of our heritage and based on that, we wanted to make sure you guys knew it was our 50th anniversary, which is what we communicated to Eleanor. Thank you so much for all your help. Really, you're amazing, so thank you so much. And then, but we also are doing an event next Saturday. I already have this set up and I just want to announce it real quick, if that's okay?
Okay.
So, Mustard's is having an antique car show to celebrate our 50th anniversary. So we have rented Northwestern's parking lot, so we have up to, you know, over 300 car capability. And we've been spreading the word so far and we are not really sure of the turnout because no one RSVPs, because we just say, "Come on." According to the car show people, that's what you do. You just let them know when the event is and then they come. So now we're just praying for a sunny day and we're going to have a nice little agenda, including fastest hot dog making contest, and then top car is going to get an award, and then we have these t-shirts, which are going to go for the first 100 cars that come. So, the special edition t-shirts. So on behalf of my whole family, my wife Karen, my son Nick, my other son Ryan, I just want to invite everybody out to this event Saturday, next Saturday from 10 to 4. It's going to be amazing, so, yep, and everyone gets one free hot dog. Woo-hoo! How's that? All right, thank you guys, I appreciate it. Thank you very much for your help.
Congratulations. All right. City manager, any announcements?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I had sent the council a note over the weekend regarding August council meetings. The council currently has a meeting scheduled for Monday, August 12. There's been some discussion about having a special meeting on the 5th of August and replacing the 12th meeting. And I suggested a different approach, that we would take the items from the Scheduled Rules Committee, the Scheduled Human Services Committee, and a council meeting, and roll it all up into one meeting, have a consent calendar, and then items of regular business for the balance. So, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'm asking the question of the council, if that makes sense, to do this for the 5th, we will go ahead and prepare the agenda. There would be no committee meetings, but there would be a general consent calendar of items for the council to consider, and then we would have regular agenda items that would come from what we have collected for human services, the city council, and for rules. And then included in that would be a resolution authorizing me to issue checks for that balance of the month, then from August 6 until September 9, and then would have concurrence on those bills listed on September 9. So, I'm looking for a general direction.
And I'm going to allow you, just ask that you ponder that for a moment. Alderman Suffertin wanted to make a quick comment, and I see that they're still in the building, and then we'll circle back to you. Thank you.
I just wanted to congratulate Mustard's on their 50 years and acknowledge an important person who's not here, and that is longtime employee Keith Woods. He was a big part of Mustard's and a big part of the community and an important part of my childhood and the childhood of a lot of people who grew up there, a lot of St. Ases kids who spent a lot of time. A big part of your Mustard's experience was getting an opportunity to talk to Keith. And as I got older, I realized that that was, he was your first model of your patron bartender relationship, and for a lot of kids, he laid a really good foundation for all of us, and you know, he passed away six years ago, now he's greatly missed, and so I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you for expression. All right. So there was a request from the city manager regarding the August 5 meeting. I'm just looking for, now it's an affirmative. Anyone have a conflict with that date? Seeing none, we'll go...
Alderman Ravel.
I'm sorry, Alderman Ravel.
Well, I just need to mention that I won't be here.
You won't be here, okay. Everyone else is in town? All right, we'll move forward. Thank you. Clerk, any communications?
Yes, I'm just giving a report back on an ethics event that my office held last Wednesday. There's really great feedback from Steve Berlin and two members of the Ethics, Evanston Ethics Board. I think there's a video available on that, of the event, that is available online. We'll post it to the clerk's page fairly soon. We encourage members of the council, especially those folks who are serving on the Ethics Subcommittee, to hear some of the feedback that residents and outside experts provided for our ethics ordinance. There are a couple of really important topics that came up, such as whistleblower protections that we do not have on the books here locally, and other items such as potential for a lobbying ordinance that also is not on the books, and so we hope to, you know, have those expressions borne out in the ordinance that is coming before the council in the next few months to rewrite our ethics laws.
Thank you, Clerk Reed. Next up, we'll have public comments. We have a total of 17 speakers that have signed up. Hopefully, everyone who's here and would like to speak is signed. Just per our council rules, we have 45 minutes for our newcomers for the total public comments section. To the folks who have been here before, I know we always take a lot of time and effort in writing your comments. You're going to have two and a half minutes, and I'm going to ask that we all cooperate in order to keep within the time segment. Clerk Lee, would you like to call the first three speakers? And just per our tradition that we've had, please listen for the bell and that'll be your indication to wrap it up. Thank you very much. First three?
Yes, I'm very proud to say that Daniel Joseph is number one on the list, Mike Vasilko, and then Misty Wittenberg.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Dan Joseph, Second Ward. First, I want to thank Clerk Reed and his staff for setting up to register online, but it took me a lot of trial and error to learn, because it's not in writing that you can't sign up until the agenda is posted. And this week, I indeed signed up immediately afterwards. So please, Clerk Reed, put something in writing when you're signing up online that you need to sign up after the agenda is posted. Thank you. Okay. Evanston spent approximately $8.2 million on unproductive litigation against Commonwealth Edison and Northern Illinois Gas Company alleging their abandoned manufactured gas pipelines posed a threat to the drinking water surrounding James Park. Though Evanston's lawsuit was dismissed with prejudice, the city of Evanston has remained silent on whether it will monitor these water pipes for pollution and the safety of drinking water. I hope they'll say, make a statement about the quality of the water there. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Mike Vasilko, Sixth Ward. So last week, I sent several emails, it was directed to my Alderman, Alderman Suffertin, that everyone was copied, asking a question whether or not the city is going to provide legal defense for Clerk Reed, the way the city has done for other Aldermen, the city manager, and others. A precedent was established in doing so, and I would just like affirmation that Clerk Reed is going to receive the same consideration. I'd like to hear that tonight, if possible. Secondly, and again, and again, Northwestern indirectly, I think, even though the Corporation Council is taking credit for the item 818, trying to slide in university properties for liquor licenses. This has come up two previous meetings and indirectly again tonight, although the Corporation Council made specific reference to Welsh Ryan Arena during AP&amp;W. So once again, from what I understand, nobody around that vicinity and the neighbors, they don't want any liquor license for Welsh Ryan Arena or the stadium. The answer was no, the first couple of times. Alderman Ravel pulled that twice, maybe she's going to pull it again tonight. In case Northwestern has a difficult time, they're very smart people, no in Latin is nullis porcas. No in Pig Latin is onee icole. No liquor. Thirdly, I'm curious about the $50,000 going to Evanston Cradle to Career. Like to see more information about how that money's been spent and whether there's any benefit to it. Maybe that money could be redirected, this time, to Family Focus. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Steve Wittenberg.
It's a sparse crowd here tonight, and up there. So I first want to commend you, some of members of council, for those brave enough to speak up last week about your belief in Ms. Mason Cup and that Devon, she'd heard that within earshot of another person had called her the B-word. I mean, I want to say too, that I believe her. I believe that the clerk called her the B-word, and it would be hard for me to believe that he hadn't, actually. Especially because the other part of that charge, which absolutely constitutes criminal sexual harassment, I mean clearly, was that there were, you know, harsh or hostile encounters regarding foria, which he was legally mandated to ensure the city complied with, which the mayor, I can say, I told him I wouldn't throw him any curveballs tonight, but he knows, I've said it, he sent me an email acknowledging that he knew some of those withholdings were not attorney-client privileged, and he knows that Ms. Mason Cup did. So they knew they weren't privileged, and they also didn't reprimand or have an investigation into why that was happening, which led to a situation from one of the people on the complaints who actually might be credible. He's in a situation where his boss, who has the authority to do it, is at odds against the people who won't let that happen. I actually think, you know, no one should do anything against people who file complaints, but I think that's the city's fault. I mean, I can't attest exactly how those encounters happened. I also want to point out that not only was Clerk Reed not allowed to speak during that, whatever it was, you had his accuser acting as his legal counsel, and the tribunal's legal counsel. And I just, it's just kind of baffling to me. So, I don't believe that you guys care about the safety of the workplace people. I mean, he is recognized by the city of Evanston as an employee, but he doesn't get workplace protections according to your policy, although he can have them somehow charged against him. And I don't believe you care about the safety of residents. I'm just thinking back to a few months ago, when I came here and I let you guys know that I was getting, things you guys were saying in your official capacity, led to things like, what I have proof of, which is a social media post of a man who engaged with one of Alderman Simmons' friends, and then sent me a post with a photo of my kid, remember the one, threatening me, maybe he should do something to harm me and my children. I brought it to you. It was also Alderman Rainey had had that beautiful post where she said I'd founded a hate group, and had that guy with the cool profile pic with a semi-automatic gun post my home address. And, you know, for all your belief, Alderman Nguyen, and wanting to keep people safe, a couple of meetings later, you added to those things and the harm against me, and you couldn't substantiate it. So I'm just going to leave you by saying, while you guys are worried about the substantiation I'll post for things I say, we are worried about the things you say that you refuse to substantiate because they're bullshit. Thank you.
Next, uh... Next three speakers, Harris Miller, Lori Keenan, and Alan Forstein.
Let me just share the clock so I'm able to keep track.
Good evening.
Two minutes, 30 minutes. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Harris Miller, Fourth Ward. First of all, police table, ordinance 76019. I understand that the liquor will be sold by those on the premises, however, I'm concerned about the, um, this issue with everyone's safety for those who live in Evanston and Willmette, north of Isabella, and around the NU vicinity in the neighborhood. I just want to try to get a better understanding here. How will this, how might this disturb the peace within these neighborhoods, including in Willmette? I ask that we please review the number of underage drinking instances, DUIs, and public intoxication incidents before you vote. I would really appreciate it, as Evanston resident and for those that I know live in Last thing is, as far as these developments go, just a quick note, I just think we should not be beating these dead horses. I think the community overall has had enough. I just keep hearing about the library parking lot and about other developments in town that, you know, we've just have had enough of them. So, thank you so much and have a great evening.
Thank you. Ms. Lori Keenan is next, followed by Alan Forstein. Thank you. Two minutes and 30.
Hi, my name is Lori Keenan. I'm here to speak on a couple of issues. I want to start, I guess, out of order, but regarding last week's censure, or attempted censure of Clerk Reed, in an article in Patch, Alderman Nguyen says, I want to, or I'm sorry, the mayor says, "I want to stress that the city council takes allegations of harassment of our city employees very seriously." Now, I want you to substitute the word resident for employee, and remember that the mayor didn't even respond to an email that I sent him about an Alderman threatening me, swearing at me in a public meeting or in a live broadcast. Or Alderman Nguyen, who said, "I'm furious, appalled that the city council, we can't vote. We choose not to vote to protect our city employees." Again, substitute resident. Appalled, "I'm angry at folks that don't recognize there are rights for everyone involved here. As an elected official, we have a different standard applied to us." What is the message that we send to our city employees? Again, what is the message we send to our residents? When I spoke to Alderman Nguyen in the parking lot after I was verbally assaulted by an Alderman in a city meeting, she said I should email the mayor, which I did. There was no outrage, there was, no one was appalled then. I echo what Misty said. Does this only apply for city employees or the residents just to take it? Is that okay? It's a double standard. If you get to be harassed, you can't pick and choose when you're furious and when you take an allegation very, very seriously, as the mayor said he did, after not replying to my email. I'd also like to talk about the NU ordinance. I think it's ridiculous that three people on a liquor board would be able to make a recommendation. Forty percent of the liquor commission is absent, two empty spots. So three people shouldn't be making a decision to serve alcohol to 40,000 people in a residential neighborhood, a majority of whom are underage. Lastly, I'd like to talk about the library parking lot. I find it funny that Judy Fisk is so transparent when she doesn't mean to be, and not transparent when she should be. The amendment that she's suggesting is strictly to try to get the library parking lot deal through for a developer, so...
50 more seconds.
So I would like to go to a Chicago Tribune article that talks about surface lots downtown Chicago and the value of the surface lot. We can wait several years and this will be more valuable to us. There's no rush. The residents don't want it. No one has spoken out for it. The merchants and the Chamber of Commerce have all spoken against it. I would advise against it. Thank you.
Next up, Steve.
Alan.
Alan, pardon.
Evie Russell and Mary Rosinsky.
Hello, I'm Alan Piersstein. I'm here to talk about A5, which is the street cleaning signs. I've mentioned this before. First of all, I'm really happy to see that you took quick action and we're at this point where you're looking at a proposal, and, but I do have a couple of issues that I wanted to share. You know, in the last couple of months, you had 10,250 street cleaning fines issued. That's over $268,000. So obviously, it is a serious issue. People really are not seeing the signs. The proposal says blocks at about 600 feet, which is really equivalent to two football fields, three yards, three feet in a yard, 100 yards, okay. So that's, and to put midfield, mid, signs in the mid-block, so that'll be about a football field, sign at the beginning, one football field in the middle, and then at the end. So that's quite a big distance. So my, what I'm looking for is maybe a few more signs in this proposal, and also it's suggested it'd take about three years to implement these additional signs, and it was explained earlier why in the Subcommittee, but I still think it's something to really consider. I think that needs to be speeded up. It's really serious. We talk about $75 street cleaning fine. Nickel and diming was brought up earlier, and this is, this is an example of nickel and diming, when Alderman Fisk brought up a proposal that could bring you significant revenue in the Subcommittee. We were here, nickel and diming, our residents with $75 fine. So that's why I think it's very important that we have additional signage, speed up the process. I think it's a very politically important, because you're going to have to explain this to your constituents when you come up from the election, why it took so long. Okay?
Thank you.
Does that help? Thank you very much for considering those adjustments to the proposal. Though I am happy you did bring it up. I really do compliment you, and I appreciate the quick, you know, proposal.
Thank you.
I'd just like to see those modifications.
Mary, you're next. And again, if you don't have an opportunity to complete your speech, you're more than happy to submit in writing or by email to the clerk. Go ahead, Mary.
Okay, thanks, Mary Rosinsky. First of all, we do want to say thanks for getting rid of that parking 35 cent convenient fee if you use the wallet. I move in and out of a lot of spaces in Evanston throughout the day, so it just takes away a little bit of the resentment of the heavy-duty parking fees we have. But I am here because of A18 and the liquor. It seems innocuous, but it's not innocuous. In the clarification from the city, it says it was inadvertently left out of the, that Northwestern U2 district, which is a stadium complex, was inadvertently left out of the liquor licensing definition of university area, and I contend that that was an intentional leave-out, or whatever you want to call it. They would not put in there because the U2 district is smack in the middle of a residential, huge residential neighborhood, and the wisdom behind not having them in a university district, which could have a liquor license, was that you don't want to be serving 7 to 60,000 people liquor, and then having them go into the neighborhood streets. I think we should not make that clarification an inclusion. The, if Northwestern wants to regulate with their police and their stuff, everything that's going on on Northwestern campus and liquor, I don't oppose that. You know, let it be their responsibility, their neighborhood, their apartments and things like that, but it does not belong to be changed, because this is a backdoor into, now that there's an R1 district and the university district is part of that R district, that then they can eventually get a liquor license. And so I hope you take to heart, do not let that pass. And then the final thing was, I really hope you take to heart what was said by Ms. Keenan and Misty. I was unaware of some of those things, but I think you can't have double standards for certain employees and then not the residents. It's awful what's going on there. So I think they have pretty much covered it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Evie?
So I just want to reiterate what Mary just said. My name is Evie Russell. I'm disturbed by this updating the definition of university area, which comes at the same time that you're trying, and also adding the definition of a commercial recreation facility, which includes such things as tennis and other things, at the same time, or the same time period that you're trying to, that Northwestern is trying to have a tax amendment passed to introduce commercial and professional events at the U2. So, the two go hand in hand, and you're making it obvious that this university area that now would include the U2, when the U2 is definitely a different... that now would include the U two, when the U two is definitely a different ballgame, haha, than the other U districts. Again, specific to Evanston, the U two area is surrounded by a large residential neighborhood, four schools, preschools, public library, and increased drunk driving there will create a great hazard. And if you allow liquor inside the U two venues, which will be made much easier by this amended updating definition, the city may be faced with ensuing lawsuits. Think about that, if accidents are linked to drinking inside U two venues, a policy the city of Evanston is now trying to pass. So, um, please do not change the university area definition to be all-encompassing of the U two. The U two district is very different than the other U districts. Thank you.
Thank you. John Nader, followed by Corrine Clarkson. Two minutes and thirty.
So, John Nader, Seventh Ward. So, probably not as weighty of a subject as some of the other things that have been discussed, but here to talk about the Lincoln Street Beach. So, there is, uh, there is a lot of beaches in Evanston for residents, for students, for lots of other places. Father, I've got family, love going to the beaches. I know, I walked down there the other day. I know this is going to get adopted and it's going to be used by Northwestern, but we don't have a dog beach anymore, if anyone has noticed. My dog likes going to the beach too. Couple of quick points to think about, about how, what we're going to do about this subject and go forward because, one, you have a major safety issue. Since there's no more dog beach anymore, you had over a year where people were climbing fences, jimmy roping fences, climbing over rocks, older folks with dogs going down there with things. I mean, I personally, just walking through that area, seen multiple people almost fall on those rocks trying to get down to various places. After hours, people are going on to the regular beaches with their pets and poop and everything else that goes on with that, which is, is not good. Second, you're not collecting any more permit fees for people wanting to use the beaches with their dogs. That's just, it's not a ton of revenue, but it's revenue. Every time you open a beach to residents, you are getting the same amount of fees for that. It's not incremental. It's not like you pay per different beach. It's all the same, so there's additional money there. And third, community. Me, fiancee, we moved this area, Evanston, a number of years ago because it had everything. Far west suburbs, we were able to commute downtown for work. Downtown era was vibrant, everything's great. This is another thing added to the list, we're kind of having to leave the community now to find a place where we can take the dog to a beach or go Skokie for the Cooch Park there, all those kinds of things. It's not a huge issue, but it's, it's one that, you know, keeps taking us out of Evanston now, and it's, it didn't used to be that way. It can still be that way. There's a lot of beaches, there's a lot of ways to subdivide. You don't need much. Fairly small area with a barricade would be enough to solve for that. Lincoln Street Beach is obviously completely blocked off and you literally have to walk through the school to get to it. So, after walking down there, I know that's a, that's a no-go, but it's something we're thinking about for finance.
You have about fifteen more seconds.
I'm good financially and, you know, the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clarkson.
Hi. I don't really have much to add because I'm pro-dog beach, pro-Lincoln beach, pro-any swimming area for a dog. But what I, um, am, have kind of gotten a real thing about is how much Northwestern has been, you know, getting on people's nerves lately in terms of the stadium and the liquor. And a couple of years ago, it was the, uh, the other end of, the south end of the, um, uh, campus building out beyond where they were initially going to. I think some of us are getting a little bit sick and tired of Northwestern getting whatever they want. And so, the dog beach is just maybe one more thing and so is the, uh, the stadium and so is serving liquor. So, I think at some point Evanston should be putting its foot down and saying, "Not now," or "Not for a while." Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Betty, Betty Sue, is she still here? Ms. Esther? Well, there she, there she comes. And after that, we have Ray Friedman, Mr. Gibbs, Bob Cruz, and followed by Doreen Price. Pardon me? Ooh, Ms. James, my apologies. No, no, after Ms., after Mrs. Esther, my apologies. I'm looking right at your name.
Thanks, Barbara. Good evening. My name is Betty Esther and I'm from the Fifth Ward. Today I have two requests for the city council. One of those requests was made, brought to you a couple of months ago by my alderman, Alderman Ruth Simmons. And that request was for, to look at the rezoning of the R five to R three zoning in the Fifth Ward. In other words, a down zoning. That is a request which the residents has been asking for since two thousand and five. The second request is for you to put on a moratorium on building houses in the Fifth Ward, any kind of housing project, until the zoning issue is looked at and resolved and until we have a well-defined affordable housing plan here for the city. The Fifth Ward will be holding a ward meeting on affordable housing next Tuesday. The Joining Fourth and the Evanston, uh, reclaimed Evanston have put together meetings and they have had them round the wards, so they've probably been in everybody's ward. Couple of ward meetings are coming up. So, and found out today that you will be sending out and doing a survey and the gentleman that wanted to know what was, um, Evanston Corral doing with their money, they are helping with doing that survey on a one-to-one basis. So, the money is being used.
You have about thirty more seconds. Just keep track.
So, that is what I'm asking, that the rezoning be looked at and that no building be done until there is a well-plan and a definition as to our request. Can it be done? Why not? It could be done. So, that's what we need.
Thank you so much.
So, she asked, I'm asking again for all of the residents. So, hopefully that will carry for some action or it's just another request going on deaf air, which I hope not. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ray, if you could just hold on one second to get Ms., Ray, if you could just hold one moment to grab Ms. James and we'll jump right back into the rotation. You have two minutes and thirty seconds. We'll let you know. Thank you.
Good evening. Barbara James Ward, I actually made it here in person tonight. I want to talk about, I want to thank you for A eleven, and if I interpret it correctly, you're going to just take it and file it away. And as I said, there should be no agreement with Northwestern until we have complete control of the beach. Now, why do we need a dog beach? Several of us have been here before, asking that once the city has clear control of the be, of Lincoln Street Beach, that it become the dog beach. A, as you saw from Mr. Hemingway's presentation on July eight, when we had a decent dog beach, it generated significant income. And that, I mean, sixty-five thousand dollars, that's a significant amount of money. Two, if Lincoln Street Beach becomes the dog beach, it will, it will take no beach space from the citizens of Evanston. What it will do is provide our dogs with a good place to run off leash, and a tired dog is a happy home. It will also, it will provide us crazy dog lovers with an important social interaction with fellow dog lovers. And when, up at that sixty-five thousand dollar mark, that made nine hundred, a thousand people who spent money to buy their passes. And that's a lot of people in this city, and they should be acknowledged and their wishes should be granted as far as I'm concerned. We want Evanston to be a great place to live, enabling us to socialize with our, with other dog owners.
Ms. James, thirty more seconds.
While keeping a eye on our dogs is valuable. And in my brain, that it, this is a no-brainer. Mr. Hemingway outlined a protracted search for a dog park. Nice idea, but the problem can be solved cheaply and expeditiously by making Lincoln Street Beach the dog beach. It does not belong to Northwestern. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Freeman, Ray, followed by Albert Gibbs and Bob Cruz. Two minutes thirty.
Good evening, everyone. Ray Friedman, Second Ward. First, I'd like to say I agree with Misty Whittenburg and Lori Keenan, and, um, I'm, I'm thinking about Alderman Wynn and her being outraged, but there is a double standard that is, it's, doesn't make sense to me. And you're correct that aldermen are not held to the same standard. You're held to a higher standard. So, I'm, I'm really, and one more thing, Peter, I would respectfully ask you to, I listened to the end of last week's city council meeting. If you would care to clarify what you said about white people not commenting on racism, appreciate it. And I don't appreciate what you said to me afterward. Okay? It seems to be there's a reoccurring theme here. Residents have not been informed or informed at last minute, and residents are not participating in many important discussions and therefore residents are left out of some very important decisions. Can we please get the agenda and pack it for any meeting at least one week in advance? This gives everyone, especially the aldermen, the opportunity to, to digest the information before it comes up for a vote. If you have identified an issue and have a discussion with all interested parties, council and residents, then work on a resolution. Seems to me that should keep everyone happy. Why is this not happening? I can't understand why we have so much discussion on raising fees and costs and have heard no discussion on cutting expenses. Uh, I can only repeat that without having a resolution to each and every question or complaint, the frustration just grows, and this is the atmosphere that is created. I have tried very hard to use proper decorum, civility, listen, respect the opinions of others, but that needs to go both ways. I have a very difficult time trying to understand how or why we are revisiting the same issues again and again with no resolution. I'm hoping that the mayor, city council, city manager, and city clerk will give us the guidance, the input, and the discussions that are necessary to reach our common goal. Thank you.
Ms. Gibbs.
Good evening. Albert Gibbs, Fifth Ward resident. Three things I'd like to go over quickly, and if I happen to run a little long, I pray that you might overlook it and provide me with maybe a minute or three more to get the point across. If not, I'll sit down. I agree with A fourteen, Resolute and Sixty-nine, R nineteen, Professional Services Agreement with James V Moran Center for Twenty-Nineteen Certificate of Rehabilitation Program. I think it's an excellent program. I think that the city council should get behind it and continue it. I disagree with any position that allows Northwestern to add whatever they choose to where liquor is concerned. You already have a lot of undeveloped minds and allow Northwestern to disperse liquor any way it wants to. It's going to be a problem not only for the area around there, but for the entire city, I agree. It was introduced to me, something that's very disappointing. Longer I recognized what city council's supposed to do and be about, I'm coming to an understanding that Evanston City Council deals sideways. By that I mean you deal to the side that is the way you want to go. I understand our city clerk was arrested for madness. Madness. And I'm seeing that there's other issues that at once was on the table for ethics and morals, and nobody seemed to get the attention that this young man has gotten for something that should not have occurred. What it's telling me more than not is that if you're a black man in this town and you come to the city council and you speak truth to power, you better watch your back. City council's coming after you. They've got many ways in which to execute that kind of attack, so it appears that their hands are clean. It's called fried ice cream, y'all. Fried ice cream. The city council needs to stop this stupidity and this madness. You need to cut it out. If you're supposed to be the elected officials for all people, some of us, different colors, and most of you are being left out in the consideration of what's best. Not only can minorities not afford housing, it's a serious problem with paying for these bonds where you want to give heaven and earth to Robert Crown. That's stupid. All of that fifty to eighty million, that could go to the entire nine wards. Everybody could get help, but you guys only see it one way, to serve those that already have and leave out the have-nots. Shame on you. From New York to California, they're calling about how this council does. Shame on you.
Thank you. Bob Cruz.
Thank you. I'm Bob Cruz in the Seventh Ward. I have a, an item before Alderman Rainey, but it'll, uh, I'm sure it'll be resolved soon. I wanted to say I, I grew up, and I apologize to everyone that spoke before me, this is kind of on, on the meanwhile side. I grew up a, a block away from, block and a half away from Mustard's. My mother came into town yesterday, yesterday, and, uh, she came into town because, from Rockford because she wanted a Mustard's hot dog. So, uh, I told the stockman, I made sure I told my two stories. The other was about twenty-five years ago. I had some, some guys to do, going to do drywall for me, and they're from the Hundred and Fifty-Fifth Street South. And I said, "Well, you know where Northwestern University is?" He said, "No, uh-uh, no." "You know the big football stadium up in Evanston?" "No, no, no, don't know where that is." "You know where Mustard's is?" "Yeah, we know Mustard." So, it's, Mustard's well-known. And I really, again, I apologize. I agree with every, just about everything that's been said prior, and you have a, a lot of tough work ahead of you. I hope you can side with the citizens.
Thank you. Our last speaker, Mr. Ring. Two minutes and thirty.
It's Doreen, Doreen Price, Doreen Price, and I want to commend, um, Mr. Gibbs for an outstanding, um, speech and redirection of our city in terms of the urgency of need that we know about, but it's, it's the best when you have people who have gone through so much to speak so eloquently and, um... eloquently and passionately and with a lot of rationality and heart. And I've admired him from a distance for a long time, but it's nice to be associated with efforts that are good for all of us. In terms of my comments, it would be with regard to A-9, and it has to do with finding out that the tickets for these events are overpriced for people like me or anyone else who has low income, and that can exclude people. You have here that, just like for developers, you waive fees. I suggest that when you have fees, instead of waiving them, you give them as incentives for discounts for the poor, or needy, or disadvantaged, or people who would like to go, who could use a little smile, shoe-in or what you call it, somebody who stays in their little apartments and doesn't get out. The police know who these people are, they take care of them, so you can always give them tickets through the police. The fleet department is really compassionate. I've seen nothing but great things since the chief has come on board. The fines besides tickets, parking also should be on a graduated basis. You know who is, is, is struggling with low income. You can have our license plates associated with our status as low-income people. In terms of the fines, I think those also should be adjusted. It's not, it was suggested but has not been implemented in terms of things I've been seeing in terms of justice and equity. The rules that the police use should apply to city enforcement, and I, I have witnessed enforcement rules that are questionable under a long period of time, and so it seems to be a real problem and not just a one-time event. And it has to do with if you're going to treat one group of people one way and another group a different way, it's not right. So you either treat everybody nice, or you treat everybody like, you know, hell's coming over on them. In terms of compassion, I can't say enough about the police force. They'll listen and try to make something work, as opposed to these are the rules, this is the only way you can do it, and if there's another way, a less expensive way, we're in transition for CARP. We need things to help with CARP. We don't need to de-hassle.
We're going to need you to wrap it up, please.
Yeah. So I'm just saying, let's think of the future, and when we have problems, we should look at them as positives and not beat on people in any way, shape, or form. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all very much for all your comments. Our next item is, item number five, the consent agenda. Alderman Rainey, would you like to quickly take us through that just for the...
You're able to motion out the entire consent agenda, ask people to block things if they would like instead of...
It's all right. We'll just take it quickly through.
I don't always get a chance to do this. While we're pulling up the consent agenda, please, you have two minutes and 30 seconds.
I'll make it a little short.
We don't want to miss anyone. Thank you, James. Thanks, very much, James.
I'm James Hengon from the Fifth Ward. I want to thank Robert Simmons and you guys from the city council for the benches that you put in for the disabled people at British Park. They are really beautiful, and I, when I showed the pictures to them earlier, they were very excited. Even one person who was so excited, we saw the grill was next to their picnic table. I guess he could cook. And another thing, about the grading of alleys, I was watching on Facebook about the city manager had a very interesting thing, and I highly recommend it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Jane. Alderman Rainey, the consent agenda for Administrative Public Works, please.
So you want me to just begin with payroll and go straight down?
Yeah, yeah. Because I think one of the items may get...
If I get off, you know, just tell me. All right. So the Administration Public Works Committee Consent Agenda, as far as I know, is payroll and for action is $3,181,565.61. The bills list for July 23rd. Credit card activity for the period ending May 26th is a total of $6,858,748.21. The credit card activity is, the number is $191,471.48. Amazon credit card activity will be handled off the consent agenda. You want me to keep going?
Yes, please.
Okay. Approval of the purchase of three public works agency vehicles from Coons County Ford of Antioch and Napolitan Fleet Group is requested. It's two Ford SUVs and one Dodge Caravan minivan. These vehicles will be allocated to public works agencies, agency. Water Production Bureau, the Ford SUVs will be purchased from Coons in the amount of $55,830.30. The minivan will be purchased from Ford, from Napolitan Fleet Group in the amount of That is for action also. Moving along, street cleaning signage. Staff is recommending that the council authorize the city manager to have additional streets cleaning signage installed at mid-block locations based on the number of tickets issued for violations of street cleaning, parking restrictions.
I'm sorry. Alderman Rainey, could you take that off, please?
A-5 is off the...
That'll be addressed by the committee chair later. Approval of a contract for the 2019 alley improvements, Contract B, and 2019 CDBG park improvements with Schroder and Schroder is being requested in the amount of $1,536,120.95 from various funding sources, including the Evanston Baseball and Softball Association, which is going to make a contribution in the amount of $50,000. That is for approval. We're being asked to approve a payment in the amount of $57,618.19 to Al offer CAT for emergency repairs to vehicle 683, as well as rental costs for use of a temporary vehicle while the city vehicle was out of service. This is for emergency repairs to a greater vehicle that handles our alley grading. And that, let's see, so that is costing approximately $57,689.19. This is for action. Approval of payment to support the ongoing efforts of Evanston Cradle to Career in the amount of $50,000. It is located at 2010 Dewey Avenue in the Family Focus, yeah, in the Family Focus Building. Is that correct? Pardon me? Yes, it is. So their, part of that fund probably goes to help with rent for family members. That is for action tonight. We're being asked to authorize a one-year sole-source renewal agreement to support, for support and licensing of VMware systems from Dell EMC Inc. in the amount of $35,828.22. There's no cost increase for the renewal period, and funding is from the Computer License and Software Support Fund. This is for action tonight. A-11 is authorization to execute a memorandum of understanding with Northwestern University for beach access and use of Lincoln Street Beach. This is off, this is, this is being placed on file. We're accepting this, and all conditions of the last year are going to be in place, and negotiations will continue. Resolution 80R-19 authorizes the city manager to execute an amendment to the contract with Alacriti for the city's cashiering system to change the vendor and add a monthly minimum payment to provide a centralized cashiering system, let's see, cashiering system commonly called ORBA pay for the city of Evanston. This amended contract will now be directly with the developer of the system. That is for action. Resolution 68R-19 is an agreement with the Youth Job Center of Evanston for 2019 building career pathways to sustainable employment. This will provide not less than 20 disconnected and unemployed young youth, young adults who are low to moderate income residents with a career pathway plan that leads to educational work trade certification, employment, supportive services, career counseling, educational support, and transportation assistance over 24 months in an amount not to exceed $55,200 for 2019. Funding for this agreement is budgeted in Parks, Recreation, and Community Services. This, this amounts to approximately $2,760 for per participant. This is for action. Resolution 69R-19 is a professional services agreement with the James B Moran Center for 2019 Certificate of Rehabilitation Program. This is to, is to provide legal services for not less than 15 Evanston residents to secure certificates of rehab, rehabilitation, expungement, and criminal record sealing in an amount not to exceed $30,000. Funding for this agreement is budgeted in Parks, Recreation, and Community Services. Costs amount approximately $2,000 per participant. This is for action. Resolution 15, we are being asked to adopt 81R-19, authorizing the manager to submit a grant application for state funding through the Open Space Land Acquisition and Development OSLAD Grant Program for the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, IDNR, for James Park renovation project. Funding for this project will be 2020 general obligation bond proceeds in the amount of $40,000. IDNR grant in the amount, pardon me? $400,000. Yes, $400,000. That's correct. It's a matching grant, and we provide $40,000. You're right. Very important, big grant. Next is Resolution 66R-19. This concerns a public meeting to be conducted as required by the Tax Increment Financing Allocation Redevelopment Act to expand the boundaries of the Howard Bridge Tax Increment Financing District. We're required to have this by law. This is for action. A-18 is ordinance, this is off the council agenda, consent agenda, and will be handled by the committee chair. Next is ordinance 71019, which authorizes the manager to execute a lease for city-owned property located at 1823 Church Street with Lighthouse Evanston LLC. Alderman Simmons has requested suspension of the rules for introduction and action at this meeting, and therefore this has been moved in that way. Next is ordinance 72019. Request has been made to, for introduction and action, and this is to decrease the number of Class D liquor licenses for Falcon Eddie's LLC doing business as Falcon Eddie's Barbecue at 825 Church Street. The business has closed and therefore no longer needs the license. Ordinance A-67019, amend city code schedule...
Could you take that off, please?
Yes. A-21, ordinance 67019 is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Ordinance 46019, amend city code, Section 726D Sidewalk Cafes, and this is for action, and allows permanent fixtures, year-round operation, and alcohol service at type-two restaurants. This is for action. That concludes...
Which two items?
Which two items? Okay.
Yeah, I was going to ask you to go back and read A-9.
I have to go back and, A-9. Oh, right. Oh, yeah, this is important. I'm sorry, I missed, I missed a couple here. A-9 is special event, out-of-space concert and, out-of-space concert at Canal Shores. Staff recommends approval of a contract with the city of Evanston and Space at 1245 Chicago Avenue to host a concert series called Out of Space on four evenings from August 8th through August 11, 2019, at the Canal Shores Golf Course, 1030 Central Street. Funding for city services provided for events require 100% reimbursement for the sponsoring organization. These fees are waived for city events and city co-sponsored events. This is for approval tonight. What was the other one?
Thank you. And before we take the vote, Alderman, did we remove item A-18? Did I see it on, okay. Perfect. It's been properly moved. Is there a second?
Wait, I have one more. A-16, just wait. A-16 is Resolution 79R-19. This authorizes the city to file a grant application with Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago, Green Infrastructures Project Partnership with funding parking lot improvements. And this is for parking lot 25 at 1614 Maple Avenue utilizing permeable paper blocks. The application establishes the maximum grant funding at 60% of the construction cost and commits Evanston to fund 40% of the construction cost or 52%. This is for action tonight, and I move approval on that. And did I miss another one?
I think that's all.
Okay. I move the Administration Public Works Consent Agenda. PND is next.
Thank you. It's been properly moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved, second by Alderman Simmons. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda with the exception of the items, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We're going to go back. Item A-3.
Mr. Chair, we're going to have to vote on this in a roll call.
Yeah?
Yeah.
You got it?
After PND.
Thank you.
And after, yeah.
I got you. Who's the chair for PND?
I am.
Thank you.
P-1, the Housing and Homelessness Commission and staff recommend city council approve the 2019 Emergency Solutions Grant allocation totaling $151,731, $138,497 to social service agencies, connections for the homeless, and the YWCA that provide housing and services for individuals and families who are homeless or at risk of homelessness, and $11,380 to the city of Evanston for grant administration. This is for action. Oh, it is held. This is held. P-2, ordinance 74019 is written for adoption of the proposed text amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow office uses for revised special conditions for office uses within R-5 and R-6 residential districts. The Plan Commission recommends denial. This was, this didn't pass. P-3, the Plan Commission and staff recommend city council adoption of zoning ordinance text amendment to revise language in the definition of craft alcohol production facilities for introduction. P-4, Plan Commission and staff recommend adoption of ordinance 77019 for approval of a major adjustment to a planned development at 100 through 132 Chicago Avenue in order to add dwelling units for a total of 28 dwelling units where office space was originally proposed in the mixed-use building approved by ordinance 61018 and extended by ordinance 65019. No changes will be needed to the approved site development allowances. Alderman Rainey requests suspension of the rules for introduction and action tonight.
Thank you. First, we'll vote to, a motion to suspend the rules. We'll take a vote on that, and then motion to pass the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
To move.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Rules are suspended. Is there a motion now to pass the full consent agenda with the exception of the items that were removed? were removed? It's been properly moved and seconded. Clerk, you wanna call the roll?
Alderman Fisk? Alderman Brathwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen? Alderman Ruth Simmons? Alderman Sufferton? Alderman Ravel? And Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Consent agenda passes, we'll go back and pick up the other items, starting with item A three.
Seventy-zero vote.
Thank you. Do you want me to read it, or you, doesn't matter? Alderman Rainey?
Yes, I'm looking at it. A three, A three, is the Amazon credit card, Mr. Chairman, I move approval, the Amazon credit card activity for the period ending May twenty-six in the amount of eleven thousand, one hundred, sixty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. Have a second?
Is there a second? Okay, seconded by Alderman Ravel. All those in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call. Go ahead, head.
Alderman Fisk? Alderman Brathwaite?
Yep.
Alderman Nguyen? Alderman Ruth Simmons? Alderman Sufferton? Alderman Ravel? Alderman Rainey?
All right. The motion passes.
Yep.
Item A five, Alderman Rainey?
Yes. Street cleaning signage, I move approval.
Thanks. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dave, could I ask you to come up just for a second and answer a question for me? As I, as I count them on the map, there are seventeen red dots that look like they're in my ward, and I'm, I'm wondering, the, when we switched over to not having overnight street cleaning, to having daytime street cleaning, I'd like to know which of these streets are affected. I know Sherman Avenue was affected, I'm not sure about Orington or some of the side streets. So, that's information that I would like to have going forward, how much of a difference, how many tickets we issued when we did overnight cleaning as opposed to the twelve-to-four or during-the-day cleaning? Is that something we can go back and look at?
I, I don't have that information myself, so I would have to ask the parking.
Okay, because I'm, I'm concerned, a lot of people in this area are students and low-income and elderly folks who may not actually see the signs or understand them. I think they may have, and this is what I'm looking for in the data, they may sort of look to see, for example, if no cars are parked on the street, they're probably asking themselves, why aren't there any cars parked on the street? And that was something that occurred in the overnight, no parking or the overnight street cleaning rather than during the day. So I've tried to observe this and where the problems are, and I think they, they do line up with the red dots. So, because the, the fines are so high now, I think that's incumbent on us to look for a way that we might make it a little bit easier for these folks. The other thing is that on Sherman Avenue and Orington especially, those, those streets are not always through streets, so the blocks are broken up, some of the blocks are really, really long, and I think it would be better to, rather than just saying on blocks over six hundred feet, some of those blocks are longer than six hundred feet, I think. And if we could put signs up on existing, on existing poles where there are the red dots, where there's the problem areas, I think that also would be really helpful. So, the other thing is that, you know, kids at Northwestern who happen to have their cars, there are certain places where they can park without there being resident-only restrictions, and those are red dots on the map, too. So I wanna be fair to the kids as well, I mean, they're not looking to break the law than that, and a seventy-five dollar ticket is a lot for them, so let's see what we can do to try to either figure out a way to maybe go back to overnight street cleaning or just installing some signs maybe every three hundred feet in the areas that have red dots.
And that is our, our first goal is to put the additional signs on the blocks where there are this situation of over thirty tickets. So yes, we will be making sure that there are additional signs on every block in which there is a red dot, and we hope to have that completed by the end of this year.
Okay, but not, not every six hundred feet, I think we need to go down to about three hundred feet. So three hundred feet is like every six houses, and that's, I think, giving, no, not six houses, whatever it is, maybe six houses.
Well, approximately half a block is what we're looking to do.
Yeah. But some of these blocks are really, really long, so.
And again, I, we will put them out in the mid-block as they were prior to making the change in two thousand and seventeen.
Okay. But can I get the data, can I get the data about how many tickets we were giving when there was overnight street cleaning?
Again, I will have to, I don't have that information.
I know.
I have to go check with the parking manager, and I will also check on the overnight streets with, what we changed from overnight to daytime.
Okay, I just want, I feel really strongly on, on trying to be fair here to folks who, again, are not looking to be scofflaws, I mean, and they're trying to comply, but I think it's, I think the daily street cleaning is really confusing because you have people coming up and parking until noon, and then it shifts off and it's, it's really not clear, just visually, whether there's gonna be street cleaning on that day. There's nothing to sort of trigger you into questioning that, so.
Okay.
Thanks, okay.
Okay. Seeing no additional lights, all those in favor of passing, what are we, on item A five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Our next item is item A eighteen.
Item A eighteen is the liquor commission, the liquor license commissioner recommends city council adoption of ordinance seventy-six oh nineteen, amending various sections of the city code, section three, four, six, the Evanston Liquor Code, by one, updating the definitions of combination restaurant, package store, and university area. Two, adding the definition of a commercial recreation facility. Three, changing the location restriction and fee associated with Class V license. Four, amending the Class W license to permit alcohol sale at outdoor recreation facilities. And five, removing Class X license as the same activities are now included in definition of a commercial recreation facility. I move approval.
Is there a second? It's been properly moved in.
Actually, I move introduction.
Thank you, thank you for, for introduction clarification. And so for those of you in, Alderman Ravel, I do see your light, we, we did pay attention out there and those that are here, we did have a discussion at our Administrative Public Works, and there were a number of us that expressed a little bit of concern and just a little bit of confusion, and we did ask our Corporation Council to just give a high-level overview of the problem that we're trying to solve, and maybe Michelle, you can speak to the summary, and then a clarification around the issue with Northwestern, because I think I've heard that quite a few times.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, Michelle Mason Cup Corporation Council. So this ordinance tries to address a few issues that we have come into as we're just drafting ordinances, and one of the requests came from Canal Shores. Canal Shores seeks to sell alcohol on the course, and so defining and changing the definition to add commercial recreation facility, we, ah, okay. When you look at the ordinance under, let's see what class is this, W, Commercial Recreation Facility, we, we found that the actual definition arguably could apply to Northwestern, that they could try to apply for this liquor license, and so the university district definition that's in the liquor code does not contain the Welsh Ryan Arena area, and so we thought we need to clarify this, that they are not eligible to apply for a commercial recreation facility license. So you'll see in the ordinance, it says facilities in the university district are not eligible for a Class W license, and so we've both amended the university district and added this clarification to the section. The other updates are regarding the music venue license. It indicates in the liquor code that only music venues within the core area are allowed to be in Evanston. Well, the only music venue that the City of Evanston has is Space, which is not in the core area, and so that just needs to be updated. And when we bring this back, we'll have a small change to this portion of the ordinance. Alderman Ravel pointed out that one of the sections needs to be stricken in section three, but we will clean that up as well. And then, I think I covered the main pieces to the update. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Alderman Ravel, did you have a comment?
Well, you may have, the Corporation Council may have already answered my question. I, I was looking at the memo on page two thirty-seven where it says that the definition of the university area needed, needed to be revised to keep the U two district from being unintentionally eligible for licenses other than the Class R license. So is the only potential problem the fact that we're creating this new commercial recreation facility category? Are there any other potential dangers of license creep for the University two district?
Well, they have a variety of uses, but, so under Class W, it used to be called indoor recreation facility, and so arguably, they would have qualified under Class W as well because that U two district is not in the definition. So, this is totally separate and apart from the request that you had tabled to August, this is simply to make sure that they can't qualify for this license either.
All right. Seeing no other lights for comments, all those in favor of passing item A eighteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And this is for introduction.
Clarification of Corporation Council, I believe an ordinance requires a roll call vote, correct?
I think traditionally, it's only if there's been money attached to it, and it is just for introduction, so unless there's any objections, call? Call?
Oh, call the roll? Alderman Fisk? Alderman Brathwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen? Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton? Alderman Ravel? And Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
The motion passes, item A twenty-one. Ordinance sixty-seven dash oh dash nineteen, Alderman Rainey?
Yes, as you said, sixty-seven zero nine, oh nineteen, amending city code ten eleven eighteen, schedule eighteen F to add Lincoln Street Parking Pilot Program. The Transportation and Parking Committee recommends we adopt ordinance, that ordinance, amending the code to restrict parking on the sixteen-hundred block of Lincoln Street to two hours from nine AM, from nine AM to six PM for a period of six months. This is a pilot program, I move approval.
It's been properly moved and seconded, take a roll call?
No, 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 I had my line.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, it's covered. Alderman Fisk?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I voted against this when it was introduced, I'm going to vote against it tonight, I, I just, I think the problem is a larger problem that we're not looking at, so I don't think the data that it provides is going to be helpful to us, and I'm hoping that we can take a more comprehensive look at this after the six-month period.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no further lights for discussion, we'll call the roll.
Alderman Fisk? Alderman Brathwaite?
Yes.
Alderman Nguyen? Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton? Alderman Ravel? And Alderman Rainey?
No.
Okay, motion passes. With a vote of, it was three against four. Yeah, four to three, excuse me.
What was the vote?
One.
Six, five votes to pass an ordinance.
Three, four.
Six, five votes.
All right, let's call the roll again for clarification, sorry for, that's my mistake.
Alderman Fisk? Alderman Brathwaite?
Yes.
Alderman Nguyen? Alderman Ruth Simmons? Alderman Sufferton? Alderman Ravel? And then Alderman Rainey?
No.
Okay, I'll say it again, so the vote passes four to three.
Fails.
Fails.
Ordinances require five votes.
It requires a majority of the Alderman president.
But I think, I think an ordinance requires five votes. You voted, Alderman Brathwaite?
I did, yeah, I supported it, four to three.
I would ask that, I, I could be totally wrong on this, but my recollection is ordinance is required by votes.
I have the rules.
Corporation Council.
I hate being wrong, so let's make sure this is right.
Decide the rule.
Section twenty-four votes.
Alderman Rainey, this is not one of those ordinances that needs a super majority of votes, a super majority vote, like, nothing like that, this is just a simple, straight majority vote.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for the clarification, so the motion passes on a vote of four to three, and that takes care of the Administrative Public Works, so on to P and D, I think there was one item.
Did he have one, Alderman? Yeah, everything was.
One item was held, all right. Got it. All right, thank you very much, we are now at call of the wards. Alderman Rainey?
Alderman Fisk, you'd start with.
Should I go ahead?
Yes, please.
Am I up? Okay, so I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. City Manager, we're meeting on August fifth? Is that, okay, and that'll, that'll be our last council meeting then until September. Okay, there are a couple of things that I'd like some attention given to, for some reason, there seem to be a ton of people, adults, riding their bikes on the sidewalks, and I don't know what that, what the reason for that is, but I'd like to find out, so chief, if we can check that out, and these are young, healthy individuals on streets with no traffic, and they're on the sidewalk, so. Okay. Oh, good, okay, that's great. The other, the other thing is that I have had some comments about, and I regret to bring this up because of the hot weather, I'm delighted to see so many people out using the fountain in Fountain Square, but there are health concerns. Someone was out washing their dog the other day, and I got phone calls about that, there were concerns about diapers, there were concerns about other things in the fountain. I actually asked the city manager to let us know how the water is treated and how the fountain is cleaned up on a regular basis, so if everyone could just use their good sense and remember that there are lots of people who are enjoying the fountain, and we all need to be on our best behavior, I, that's the best I can, I can say. And Mr. City Manager can, I, I, I don't know if we allow dogs in the fountain, I'm reluctant without a dog beach to say the dogs can't be on there, but, but I know that there are rules posted.
And Alderman Fisk?
But please don't bathe your dog in the fountain.
And Alderman Fisk, members of the council, and the Corporation Council, why don't you stick close as she walks away? The fountain is considered a type of swimming pool by the State Department of Health, and so actually, they were around today doing an inspection. We clean the fountain, we test the water, I think now it's twice a day to do that, so that is all in place, but yes, there are multiple uses there, we, we don't have a fountain police, and so it is difficult always, certainly, we'd ask people to use good common sense, we will continue to post signs as appropriate, but I think we're really depending on our, our friends and neighbors who are there at the fountain to just use common sense.
Okay.
Can, can I make a note just, uh, for the record, because I don't want folks getting stopped out in our community for things? Uh, the current city code says that, uh, as an avid bicyclist, the code says that you are allowed to ride a bike anywhere in the city as long as you're not in a D-one, D-two, or D-three district. And so if we want to stop folks on the sidewalk outside of a D-one, D-two, or D-three district, we'd have to update the code.
Mr. City Clerk, I, I, I really think that that is, uh, something for our Corporation Council, and that it's not true. It's where posted. It's where posted, because there are no bike-riding signs posted on a number of streets in my ward...
On Ridge, yes.
That are not in those districts. So you're giving out wrong information to people, and I, and that is not helpful. So please, leave it, sorry, please leave it to the Corporation Council to answer that question.
Well, as the records keeper and ordinance keeper have a duty, I think, to make sure that we don't have folks in the city being stopped or harassed for something that's not illegal.
So we'll continue. Uh, thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Wynn?
Uh, there is no, uh, riding bicycles on the, in the main, uh, Chicago Avenue, um, Commercial District or the main Demster Commercial District, and it's posted and, and it's marked on the sidewalks. So please don't ride your bicycle in that area. Um, I, uh, want to make an announcement about, uh, my next Third Ward Town Hall meeting, which is this coming Thursday night, July twenty-fifth. It's going to be at the Carvali Moni Sori School, because Lincoln School is closed during the summer. That's the corner of Hinman and Demster. Uh, the meeting will be from seven to eight-thirty, and I invite everyone to come and join us. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Alderman Wynn. Uh, just on behalf of the Second Ward, I just want to thank all the residents who came out, uh, to...
Alderman Braithwaite, can I just interrupt? Um, so the, the rules do say, Alderman Rainey's right, I found a different rule under ordinances twenty point two.
Sure.
An ordinance to pass requires a majority vote, five votes of the nine Aldermen. Since you only, you're missing two Aldermen tonight, it doesn't say Alderman present. Um, past practice has indicated that it's Alderman present, but I just wanted to point out for the record that it does say five of nine Aldermen. Yeah, so it fails.
So...
I do think that rule needs to be updated, because it's certainly not your practice.
So let's make a referral to...
I'll bring it, I'll bring it on August fifth.
Update that, um, if we need to. That's a pilot. Whose ward is that in? It's in yours. Um, if there isn't a sense of urgency, maybe we wait until everyone's here, and then we can have someone who is on the oppo... Still, it would be someone on the opposing side.
Vote to suspend the rules.
Okay, so we'll bring it...
Tonight, you could do that tonight.
Perfect. Yes?
Wait, wait.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, could someone... So you could also vote to suspend your rules on twenty point two tonight, if you wanted to move this forward.
Right, so I'm going to suspect that we're going to have a similar...
It requires two-thirds present.
Right, so if we have a similar outcome, we'll just move it to the, to the fifth and keep it simple. Is that okay with you, Alderman Ravel?
I'm really confused. I mean, if something, if we voted on something and, and now we're moving it, is that what we're doing?
Mr. Mayor, per tem, um, I, I think the Corporation Council has pointed out the rule, uh, I think it's, uh, of the opinion of the chair then, that the previous vote did not pass.
Right.
And so if you are in concurrence with that, then, uh, the motion could be reconsidered if a member wishes to do that. Uh, but otherwise, uh, if you are, uh, opining that the votes sufficient were not present, then the, the, I, I would think you would need to make that announcement that that previous vote failed, uh, and so it is, it is failed, and if not reconsidered, then it would have to come back at a future meeting.
Correct. It could be reconsidered.
Are you okay with bringing it back at a future meeting when we have for council? So that, or...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Is it possible, I'd like to get, uh, the Corporation Council, if an ordinance fails, can it be brought back in another form?
In another form, not the exact ordinance?
Can it be brought back if it's failed?
I thought it was by someone who would have been on the opposing side, even though the opposing side...
It has to be someone who's on the prevailing side.
It would be counterintuitive.
Someone who voted in opposition would have to move...
If you want, I'll do it. I might even vote for it next time.
Well, I, I was going to suggest that maybe we just need to bring this whole pilot back to the Transportation and Parking Committee to talk over some more.
Okay, okay, that can happen, too.
And so I knew ordinance could be drafted and brought back after that discussion.
Correct, so that you could make a referral during call of the wards to bring it back.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, so I started by saying, just on behalf of the Second Ward residents, just would like to thank all the folks that came out this past Saturday in the hot sun. I may have you, uh, to, for the street naming for Ernest, uh, Jackson Way. We had a wonderful, uh, turnout, and congratulations to the Jackson family and all those that attended. Just as a reminder, uh, the Second Ward, we take the month of July and August off just due to low attendance, and, uh, I spend my time attending, uh, block parties. So for those that are registered, they're, they're block parties, we do receive notifications. And if you have not registered with a permit, I ask that you send me an email, uh, to my email address to let me know about your events. Thank you. Alderman Simmons?
Thank you. Um, thank you to First Church of God Christian Life Center, Pastor Monte Dillard and Minister Natisha Waldron for a fantastic resource fair, um, that included many, uh, service providers in town, and our Senator, uh, Senator Laura Fine was a wonderful event. Also, thank you to friends and neighbors that came out to participate in the wheelchair wash at Over the Rainbow. It was a great time, as usual. Thank you to Mr. Pat Hughes for your leadership there. And all are welcome and encouraged to join us on Monday, July twenty-ninth. Uh, we will have a community meeting to discuss our vision for the lot at Church and Darrow. Thank you.
Alderman Sufferton?
Uh, two things. Uh, one is tomorrow night, uh, July twenty-third, six-thirty to eight PM, in the Parasol Room, there'll be a property tax appeals seminar, uh, presented by Cook County Commissioner Larry Sufferton, Cook County Board Review Commissioner Michael Carbonargie, State Senators Laura Fine and Heather Staines, and State Representatives Robin Gable, Kelly Cassidy, and Jennifer Gong-Gershewitz. Uh, and I would also just like to acknowledge the thirty-fourth anniversary of the passing of Marty Leoni, uh, Evanston firefighter. Uh, the annual firefighter memorial is today. It was a beautiful ceremony, uh, and it will be next year on, uh, July twenty-second as well, so save the date. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sufferton. Alderman Ravel?
Um, well, two things. I, um, make a referral to the Transportation and Parking Committee to, um, revisit the question of the pilot program for, um, Lincoln Street just east of Green Bay Road. And then, um, we had, it was fun to celebrate the fiftieth anniversary of muster's last stand this eve, earlier this evening, and I just, um, encourage everybody to come out, um, this Saturday between ten AM and four PM to check out the classic cars and, um, get a free hot dog.
Thank you, Alderman Ravel. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you very much. Um, as Tom Sufferton mentioned, today was the anniversary of, of Marty Leoni's death in a fire in the Fifth Ward, and the, the celebration of his life and the honor of all fallen firefighters and, um, first responders is just very touching. And if you've never been, it'll be on the twenty-second of July next year, rain or shine. Um, so plan ahead. Um, just a beautiful ceremony. Um, also, the, the thirtieth of this month at, uh, the Levy Center at six-thirty and seven-thirty, two more or less separate meetings. I will have an Eighth Ward meeting, and Kelly Cassidy at seven-thirty is going to explain about recreational marijuana and how it's going to be implemented in the state of Illinois. And hopefully, uh, Evanston will get on board, and, uh, so if you're interested in how that's happened in other states and what she's hoping will happen locally, come on out and, uh, listen. So, everybody's welcome, but it is an Eighth Ward meeting.
Uh, thank you very much, Alderman Rainey, and I'd like to thank all those folks that, uh, stuck around to, uh, the end of the meeting. We do not have executive session. Is there a motion to, uh, adjourn?
Move adjournment.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? Have a wonderful evening. Thank you.